Welcome to tonight's pre-meeting for November 10th, 2025. Do we have anything for council agenda? I know we had a couple of questions from you, Council Carmelia. Anything else from anybody? Reports, Council Zadi?
Just want to say big congratulations on 3H passing. So that's exciting, but that's obviously for all of city to celebrate. I went on business block last week with Shelby Wood and Stephanie. And so big thanks to them for taking me out. Got to meet some really interesting new businesses on the far north side of town, near the orchard. And went to Taste of Westminster, which was fantastic. And so thank you to the chamber for hosting that as always. And thank you to all of the businesses that put in their time and effort to share their foods with the city. And attended the North Metro Arts Gala. And that was a fantastic event. And so I'm really grateful to North Metro Arts Alliance for all the work they did and time and effort they put into the event. It was great.
So I went to the PF Chang's grand opening. Happy to report on their first day, they made $10,000. So they were pretty pleased about opening and having such a turnout. And it's been busy since, I think. Also went to the Walmart ribbon cutting on I-25, 136. That's a store I shop at, so I was amazed that they could transfigure it while we were still shopping. So employees seemed really pleased with how it turned out and the work they did. It does look updated and fresh and brighter, so I was impressed with that. Also went to the Arts Alliance Gala, good turnout, good entertainment. And so that was a good event. I guess, from what I understand, the more money they make, the more tax money they get. So you have to make money to get money.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Right.
Council Demont?
Nothing for me.
I did Dr. Cog last week. Just brief overview, they talked about moving the regional transportation plan timeframe back for the call of projects a year. So they figured out a way to still fund things, but that does just give us, I would, I'm looking at it positively as it could give us another extra, some extra time to get a project proposed for that. Would love to see some type of partnership between, you know, because we have a lot of edge conditions in Westminster. So would love to see us look at, you know, working with another city, which could actually put us in a better position for, for a project. Then there's also a policy agenda that Dr. Cog circulates, just similar to what we do for legislative policy. They have one, so I will circulate that. I, it was busy last week, so I've not done that, but I will forward it around to everybody to take a look at. And then there will be in the next meeting, a bigger update on our AAA agency, our agency on area aging, something like that. I kill it every time I say it. They are working with $5 million less. They have been able to, they've, they've reduced their rides for, for seniors by about 35%. And they've put out significantly less meals. And so it's just, and again, like I said, they'll have more of an update and I can share that with you. But it's all, you know, just like with everything else, it's just something that we all have to be thinking about in terms of that reduction in service. And then-
Do they still have the Oms Budsman under that?
They do, they do still have the Oms Budsman program. It's not, I don't think they're expanding it, but we'll see if it survives.
It's just such a great, when people are in those situations and don't have any place else to go. It's just been a help for many.
Yeah. And then I did, I, I went to Taste of Westminster, I feel like I ate Westminster. Always, you don't, you don't realize how much you're eating as you graze.
Well, it's just a little dance.
I know, I know. I rolled out of that. Yeah, so thank you for putting, have, thank you to the chamber for putting that on. It's always a great event. I think that's it.
A lot of the things everybody else went to. I, I was honored to speak at a mom funeral, major bang, Saturday. Depending on the age of the person, this funeral had been going on its third day. It was all day yesterday from 8:00 AM till 12:00 AM yesterday. And then they had funeral service today. But it's always great to be with mom. And I had many questions because I'd never been to one of their funerals. So I just had to ask and they shared why things were the way they were, so that I would understand. Taste of Chamber was fantastic. My husband made it down the first aisle and said, I'm stuffed. And I said, we still have to go that way and that way. So they do good work. Metro Arts was fantastic, got some good Christmas presents from the silent auction. PF Chang's is amazing and tastes so good. I'm so excited. And so now I owe grandsons that live right next to them in the apartments that are over behind all of the shopping area. A lunch or dinner, so I told him, we got to get it scheduled. Walmart was great. The one before at 94th was great, but this one too, they, they. I bet most people don't think of some of their employees being there into the 30 years. But both of those stores have people from 25 years up that love it. And I think we met every person because after they were done, I had signed up as alumni member to work the police booth. They were giving freebies away and had the SWAT team there, or the SWAT, I call it the Batmobile. But, and every employee just kept coming by and thanking us for being there. And I was glad that Deputy Dorr could be there because he's helped us so much and all of that. And I like to give credit where it's due. I don't do anything, but your folks do. So I couldn't find him, he's so tall. And here he slipped over right here beside me almost. And so he came up on stage to get his accolades. Northwest Mayors and Commissioners has a meeting this week. And I had told you, we had talked about having a letter that goes to the delegation about the airport and noise and just making them aware. That draft is going to be presented Thursday. We're not sure how that's going to land, so stay tuned and I'll report back. And what do you have, Chris?
I have a brief report, but I'll do that at the dais tonight, so nothing for pre-meeting.
I just have a couple of other announcements I forgot. So our church on Saturday from 10 to noon are making baby blankets for hospitals nearby. It's for women only, it's a Friendsgiving. So if anyone wants to join us, I know we're doing that onboarding too. So I may break out just for a couple of hours for that.
So that was canceled?
No, shouldn't be.
It's the Saturday, right?
They just canceled mine.
Oh, no, you are certainly welcome to come.
No, I accepted the decline.
I don't know if I need to go or not, but Presbyterian Church, we do a dinner with them on the 20th. It's for the less fortunate in the area and it starts at 5:30. Anyone that wants to show up to help. The 27th, we're doing Thanksgiving with the Presbyterian Church at noon. And you're welcome to help with that too. So just thought I'd let you know what we're up to anyway.
Anything else?
I thought we would take a minute to discuss council appointments for what the process is and what council wishes to move forward, or how council wishes to move forward. So do you want to kick us off, Dave?
Sure. December 1st, when Mayor-elect Carmelia is sworn in, that will create a vacancy. The remaining two years of now Councilor Carmelia's term will need to be filled. And under the charter, City Council has 30 days in which to appoint a person to fill that position. The council rules contemplate an application and interview process. So I think we wanted to raise the issue so that City Council could start thinking about how that process might look and whether City Council, I think, is interested in perhaps making an announcement to the public or inviting applications between now and December 1st. If that would facilitate, you know, a process that would start on December 1st. Because with the holidays coming, I'll just speak for myself. I think that there's some timing challenges with a 30-day clock that'll start on December 1st because you'll run into holidays. So the question would be, you know, what schedule is desired for an application process or interviews? And then special meetings for City Council? And at which times, you know, they could vote eventually the candidates to fill the vacancy.
Thank you, City Attorney Frankel.
I'm just curious if you're gonna, I mean, I've been through more of these than I care to have. But every time we went through them, the council who is sitting, who selects, has questions that they put in the application. That helps that you vet out who, who you want to work with. I understand you have like a time constraint ultimately. I don't really care if I'm not going to be here. But if my experience could lend some advice, like I think it makes a lot of sense for the people who are going to be sitting in these seats to have some say in who they're going to work with for the next two years. And so you probably could get at least like some of your dates and stuff lined up. But in terms of what your application looks like, that's how we've done it in the past. And like I said, I bet I've interviewed probably close to 300 people for different vacancies. So it's, you know, I think that's helpful, whatever it's worth.
And we talked in pre-meeting that there's five of you sitting here that are going to be moving on. So it is okay for you to look at a date to, to have applications in because you're, you are going to be seated December 1st. So this just gives you a jumpstart so you can let people know what the timelines are going to be. If you decide to look at this and want to put in your own questions, you have time to do that ASAP to change anything. So they can get this out, so people can get it back in by whatever date you choose. So I just wanted you to know, we discussed that legality piece, that you, you have every right to do that tonight and get a jumpstart. So if we open the application essentially now or within the next week, we, in the past, we have had the application open for roughly two weeks. And then we closed the application. City Council has then submitted questions for the interview. You also most certainly can submit questions for the application as well. I had passed around two sample applications. They're just the last two from the last two, the last two appointments that have been done. They, by no means do you have to use these, it's just a starting place. And then we would compile those materials, distribute them to council. And after you agree or decide on some interview questions, we would hold some special meetings so you could interview the council candidates. And then we, in an ideal world, we could get it all done. So on the meeting on the 22nd, we could vote on, or you can vote, not me. You can vote on who you would like to receive the appointment. And then, but if that timeline seems, if, if you want to wait, we could call a special meeting December 29th. But in order for the appointment to be successful, it has to be done before December 31st.
I would like to do it at the meeting. As I've actually been through this process, I don't remember, Dave, if you were on council then.
I was.
So, you know, I filled out the application and then we had in-person interviews on a, I believe it was on a Sunday. So we all came during that, you know, block on a Sunday and took turns. And then on a council night, we all came and then we listened to the votes. And then whoever didn't get enough votes, you know, then they moved on to the next person. And if, I think you might have done it in a way where like some people went on to like a second round of votes until you finally narrowed down on one person. Because if, because if more than one person got like four votes or something like that, I think they went to like a second round type thing. If I remember correctly, I mean, clearly I didn't make it. I had to run to get a seat. But, you know, I've been through the process and I thought that, I thought that was a really well-done process when I went through it.
Just for knowledge, I think that time we went Saturday and Sunday because we had so many applicants. And I know they put the, they, they added that rule actually when I was trying to get appointed. And it was faith winner's seat, I think. And they added like where they would go four rounds. Because like when I applied that time, I had just been in the election and it was Shannon Bird and I. And we went like three rounds, like everybody dropped off except for me and Shannon. Then it was deadlocked and so then they threw everybody back in. And then that's when Maria DeCamber got seated. So I do think that that's an effective thing unless you want to get stuck into a 79 vote night, which that's not fun either, so.
So to clarify, it sounds like we're advocating for possibly doing this over the weekend, on a weekend day?
Interviews.
The interview portion. And so if we gave this, if we finish the questionnaire to get it out by next Monday's timeline, then we would get the questionnaires back by the first?
That's, that's where I'm saying you, you are in a conundrum because you probably want to get the input of the newly seated council member.
Right, I'm trying to work that out as well.
Well, if we, I mean, we'd get the applications back by the first, but-
And then they could go through them.
Which we'd have the new council member on the first. And then we'd have to what, make a decision in a week to see who we're going to interview?
Is there any reason they couldn't ask the, I mean, you know who's going to be seated as a council member? Is there any reason you couldn't have them give input ahead of that?
Sure, I think you can in terms of the, the application form. Absolutely, yeah, the application form, I would recommend, you know, share it with Councilor-elect Johnson so that you can have his input. And that way, the five members of council who are seated here right now that will be continuing on, on December 1st, can have the input of the sixth member before you post your application form. And that way, the application is out active for a couple of weeks. You'll have a pool of candidates for that first week of December for your next steps.
Council Ireland?
I just know I can't do Sundays. That's my Sabbath and I have things all on Sunday. So if you're doing Sundays, I hope, I think we can figure out something else. Also, I don't know how this process ever occurred, why we don't do it according to the election that we just had. Because the people spoke, this is what people get upset about. There's no transparency when there's election, there's a fourth person that was chosen. And I can see if they got way less votes than the rest, but with, in with a 75% margin of the next person, I don't see why we go through this process.
Alls I can say about that is people were asked to vote for three. If you were asked to vote for four, I mean, anytime you're asked to vote for more than one, I know in my head, I go through a process. So folks were asked to vote for three. I think that's how this all came about.
Okay.
Council H?
I was just going to say the same thing, like mathematically, that doesn't work. Because if people were asked to vote for four, we don't know who that fourth person would be. So like, I was just, the point you made was the point, that's why I raised my hand. Mathematically, that doesn't-
If it was that, I would have been here, not Maria DeCamber, so.
Council-
And to add to that, so the way the ballots work in a pick-three structure, if someone picks four, the whole ballot gets thrown out. That's how the election division handles that. They don't count the first three, they don't count. So we don't actually know who, who the fourth preference would have been if it wasn't pick four, because it was a pick three. So the math, like Councilor Hott said, the, the way the math actually works is you, you can't look at it that way. You have to look at the way the instructions were and the instructions were pick three. And just because someone has a fourth number of most votes, that doesn't mean that they were actually the preference of the voting public. So we don't actually know who the fourth would have been.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
So first step is the actual application. When, when do you want everybody's input so that you know it's ready to go out?
I think we can do that in one week. What does everyone else think? Can we get that?
Yes.
So give a date.
So 17th.
Yes.
17th, the application's going out?
No, that you all look at this.
Okay.
And if you have anything that you want changed, or you feed it. And then if there is anything, you'll figure out how to talk about it. Yep.
Will we have that little time maybe set aside in an agenda to finalize the application? Or what's the?
Really, that's council's preference. If you could get me, and this, this is, this cuts it shorter, but if you can get me your application feedback by the 14th, I can come back to you on the 17th with finalized or close to a finalized application just so we could get it out and still have it open for roughly two weeks. And we can't push that back, it just, we, staff is trying to help you avoid the week of Christmas.
Yeah. It's doable, I think that's-
Yes, that works.
Okay, so application, you get your feedback in by the 14th to Abby. And then the 17th?
I'll bring back a final draft. And then if council agrees upon that draft, it will be posted the 18th.
And I would say, make sure you just send your comments directly to Abby, not all. Abby will compile and if there's any contradiction or overlap, those will be highlighted in that draft. So don't, don't have a virtual meeting, do a, send it directly to, I'm channeling City Attorney here. Send it directly to the clerk.
Yes, please.
And, and having no comments is the same as the comment. So meaning if you don't hear from us, assume that that person is okay with the-
Yes, yes, yes. Do, do we want to talk about tentative interview dates or would we rather hold off on that?
I think we should discuss the whole timeline because there's, yeah.
Everything will start filling in.
Right, right.
Are there any days that don't work for people? And I don't know if you know your schedule already.
Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays don't work.
Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays.
What are we, so 14, 18, so two weeks after. So we're looking at, when, when would this close, December 1st, 2nd?
December 2nd, if we're going to go a strict 14 days.
So we could possibly look at interviews on the 13th? Yeah.
It definitely works better than the week before and I have my piano recital on Saturday.
That's good to hear.
Just play, I'll be, I'll call in.
Is there anyone that doesn't work for? Is there anyone that doesn't work for? Okay.
That's on 13, that's Saturday, 13.
What are we?
I guess it matters how many we get.
That's, yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, is what if we get like 40 applications? I don't know kind of what the experience is, but do we narrow it down? Do we have that discussion on narrowing?
I would pick two days to interview just in case you need them. So that nobody, nobody, so that you know, all of you can be there. And it signals to the people applying, if they can't do those dates, they can't apply.
Can we do the 12th and 13th?
Do we have anything on our schedule by 12th? I don't have my calendar.
Jody's looking.
Does, does the 12th work for everyone too?
It'd work for me if there's nothing conflicting, I don't know.
Whatever.
Just in the evening is fire Santa visits is what I'm seeing on my calendar.
Okay, we might miss that, so, okay.
That works.
So December 12th and 13th?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I could probably start at five or something, just to.
Okay, five o'clock start on the 12th with a possible five o'clock start on the 12th.
Yeah. All day 13th.
I think that just gives you space to know, you can, it's something to play with. You'll feel better.
Right. Not rushed. To Counselor Normella's point, or I'm sorry, Mayor Proton's point, when we get the applications due on the second, do we think we want to narrow down based on those applications who we actually interview?
In the past few times this has been done, that they have not narrowed down before the interview. I'm not saying that that has to be, this is your process, but that has not been the case. They've interviewed everybody who's applied.
I think it's fine as, it's not 100.
Right. I know, I feel like, is there a threshold that we want to establish just in the like reality of time?
Cause it closes December 2nd, so you have plenty of time to know how many by then. You might want to have a piece in there that you may or may not use to gather, to see if you're going to interview everybody.
So like on the 8th or something, we could determine?
Have a discussion if we need to narrow it down if it's a lot.
Okay. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, we could put a placeholder for a pre-meeting on December 8th.
Yeah.
Evening. Ready to be?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
What else do you all need so that it's successful? When, if you choose to, I don't know where the one is, with the questions you want to ask, I think it's helpful to start that process too, be thinking about it, don't wait till the last. You've all just been through election season, so you know what's out there on the streets and you know our strategic plan, you know what you've been working on. So I would suggest you get your questions to Counselor Carmelia, Mayor-elect, and she sees how many you have, then you might have to discuss honing those down. But they did, did they give the questions to you guys so you knew what you're gonna be asked? Cause it seems like once the first person's asked the questions, everybody's gonna know.
They did it a little bit different when I went through it than we did it. I don't, and I don't remember, that's been 10 years ago. I just remember the process.
I did it once myself, actually. I would think they just took you in the room one at a time. The other ones were not in the room.
This is all broadcast live.
Yeah.
That was, that was not a thing either. Because when I went through it, it was up in the boardroom upstairs and they took us each in individually and was a little bit more free flowing than we've done. Like where we did it, it was very structured. So everybody was getting the same questions. We each asked our questions. So then the process felt very fair to the applicants.
Yeah, when I did it, we went up to where we do public comment and the counselors were sitting at the dais asking questions. And you could choose to come early and listen to people before you were not, and I definitely did.
Okay, so can I just make sure that I have all, all my dates right? I'll get application input by the 14th. And then, so on the 17th, I'll come in and give you a finalized application or close to a finalized application. The application will be released the 18th. It will close on December 2nd. Then if there are a lot of applications, and we'll figure out what a lot means, on December 8th, we'll talk about whether or not the applicant pool needs to be narrowed down by all of you. And then interviews will be the evening of the 12th and/or the 13th, depending on how many interviews need to be had.
That looks good.
And how do they get the applications? They have to contact you?
Yeah, so people, we've been getting inquiries and I've been taking their name and I said once the process is figured out, I will let them know. It will be up on the website, but yes, you can have anybody who is interested to contact me.
Okay.
And I'll suggest that the city clerks and city council, these two versions of the questions electronically, that'll help you if that's what you want to use to base any modifications or changes.
And also the order that we interview them. Could that be random, like they pick a number or something? And so if people are sitting out here listening to each other, at least it's a random thing. We didn't.
Yeah, I, I think however council agrees upon doing it is fine. I don't think that they have to be interviewed in a certain order, that, that is completely up to you.
I guess they'd have to pick a time though.
Just gonna say, I think we let time slots and people pick them at, like they, whoever picked first.
Okay.
Because people also have their schedules and things that they have to do.
Okay. To give an idea of how many questions we should each be asking, interview, how much time was given in the interviews? Was it 15 minutes or a half hour?
We each ask one question.
One question, okay.
Yeah, the interview times were roughly 15 to 20 minutes.
Okay, one question each. Okay.
Then do they need to decide if they want to do them?
Maybe ask for it.
Because I would think IT needs to know if you're gonna broadcast it, that, or are you gonna do it individually in the room and not be transparent with the interview process? Just so that staff knows what they're doing or not doing.
I think going transparent, I know it's kind of nerve-wracking, so maybe we don't have somebody just standing at the dais.
I think it's nerve-wracking either way, because I also interviewed for the inclusivity board and that was in this room. And I, I don't think either one, I was like just as nervous both times.
You were fine.
I think definitely transparent, okay, public.
I agree with that, the broadcast is.
Yeah, I just thought we need to be able to let the other folks know that we're gonna have to participate in that, so. Perfect, anything else?
Of course that, yeah, thank you.
All right, let's go run a meeting.
If he's right there, we could ask him.
Abby, I think Pastor's about to expire, but do you think they can stay after?
Same.
We're, yeah, we're all about to expire, I think. Yes, if there's somewhere else.
Do not sell them. Yeah, just do control.
I think we can do it. He's got two.
I don't know, we can talk.
I'm stuck.
So I plugged it through over here so that you could.
Welcome to tonight's meeting of November 10th, 2025. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the Westminster City Council meeting of November 10th, 2025. We appreciate your attendance and would like to remind everyone that our meetings are governed by the rules of decorum, which are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect during all meetings, including breaks and transitions. To ensure a welcoming and respectful environment, we kindly ask everyone to adhere to the following expectations. No attendees shall disrupt the meeting. Threats and intimidation are strictly prohibited. Audible expressions of support or opposition for any speaker are not allowed. Signs and placards are prohibited inside the chamber. All attendees must remain seated in the designated seats and refrain from occupying aisles or blocking doorways. Thank you for your cooperation and understanding as we work together to maintain a productive and respectful meeting. If you are here to speak during public comment, please sign up in the lobby. Sign-up closes at 7:15. Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia?
Present.
Counselor Demott?
Present.
Counselor Azadi?
Here.
Counselor Hott?
Present.
Mayor McNally?
Here.
Mayor Protem Normella?
Here.
And Counselor Ireland?
Here.
That brings us consideration of minutes of October 27th. Mayor Protem?
I move to approve minutes from the previous meeting, October 27th, 2025, as presented.
Counselor Hott?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from previous meeting, October 27th, 2025, as presented. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, or all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to public comment. The public comment portion is an opportunity for the public to speak with the city council. Each participant will have up to three minutes. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. The city clerk has informed me that we have received no emails and one voicemail that has been attached to tonight's packet. City clerk, please call the first speaker. The first speaker is Alan Farb.
Regarding last week's city council election, I want to congratulate Counselor Carmelia, who will become the city's next mayor. You're about to become the public face and the outward bearing of this city and you'll have a lot to carry on your shoulders. But you are more than capable in that regard and your engaging in even tempered manner will carry you through for the city throughout the next four years. And I'm sure whatever insights Mayor McNally offers you will prove valuable in your new role. Congratulations to Mayor Protem Normella on her reelection to this council, her professional experience as a city planner and her easygoing demeanor and as a dedicated member of this council will continue to prove particularly valuable to our residents. Congratulations too, to Counselor Azadi for his reelection to this council. Residents can continue to look forward to those in-person and valuable Monday night one-on-one meetings where they have the opportunity to dive deeper into issues of the city that matter to them and know that they are being heard because Counselor Azadi listens. And congratulations to Jack Johnson, a resident of South Westminster, who will join this council for the first time as a dedicated attorney who focuses on disability rights. He possesses the understanding of not just legal issues that will come before council, but the compassion for people in need. I wish you all a productive and meaningful time as you serve all of our city's residents alongside your talented colleagues, Counselors Hott and Ireland during your terms of office. I thank Counselor Demott for his years of service on council and to this community. I think I'll miss your monthly policy and pilsters get-togethers that I was able to attend where I could interact with residents of varied perspectives. So thank you for that opportunity. And of course, I thank Mayor McNally for her many years of supremely dedicated service to this, her Westminster community. Your stamina, drive and indomitable spirit have proven singularly admirable. Just for the council, my two suggestions to our new council are, first, please consider how to have our city provide better and more transparent communication with its residents. I think council members have noticed some gaps in that communication, judging from the residents who have spoken during public comment. And second, please seek ways to cast a wider, more encompassing and embracing net that brings in more citizen volunteers who you are missing. These are the folks who can be the city's eyes and ears and boots on the ground to give you a more expanded perspective of your residents and their concerns. People want to serve their communities. Give them that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Beth McBride. Welcome.
Thank you. I have a few, few things there, just to hand out, now since our activities. I also like to compliment Alan for his statement. I thought it was beautifully done, so.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. I am Beth McBride, the volunteer chair with the Westy Dog Park Guardians. And as of now, we have over 800 people who have signed up to receive our newsletter. That's double what we had last year, so this is rather exciting. Since organizing, we have worked with the community and the staff of the city. We've learned so much and we feel like we've collaborated really well and I hope, hope they feel the same way. On October 18th, you'll see the first flyer there is for a pup party, which is to clean up the park. And despite being a terribly windy day, we had over 100 people attend. And last year, we filled 22 large bags with trash. This year, we had only six. Comments were made that the park was basically clean compared to last year, which delighted us. And it's not perfect, but we find that people are much more conscious about picking up and taking care of it. A lot of people have come up and actually thanked us, wanted to shake their hand for just working out there. So I just, I want you to know that it's been a really wonderful experience. One of the outcomes of this event, and others have been working with the community and the Westy staff, for example, standing like rangers, Aaron Gillespie and Nate Matlock last year checked in with us all the time. They did that again this year and even disposed of the trash bags. Then the rangers like Ann Gardetti and Aaron also set up tables to educate the public about the dangers of snakes. Once we realized there was a need for information about if someone was, someone or a dog was bitten, that we should gather up information about close by clinics, vet clinics, and where they had the antivenom. And we gathered that up and we put it in a form with phone numbers and locations and mileage to, it was called Emergency Resource List. And then Greg Moser of the Westy Fire Department in 15 minutes turned that into a map and I was just delighted. And if anybody doesn't know that family, they also worked in the library. So I found that out too. So, and so this is a very quick looking, but the other thing is, the animal man. So, and so this is a very quick looking, but the other thing is, the animal management supervisor, Kelly Jellin, had her staff put the information on their phones, and she gave it to dispatch. So, you know, it's the outgrowth of everybody working together. In turn, when Kelly needed volunteers for the pet clinic, vaccination clinic at Westview in August, she called upon us, and there were over 217 pets vaccinated. She's already contacted her, not only for the next one at the MAC on February 28th, but she's already got us signed up for August, so this is really great. Even the librarian, Kelly Tuncannon, contacted us to make toys for shelter pets, and we're going to be giving these out to our next event, and that is on the 22nd, our Paws Giving. And it's a food drive, and it's so crucial now. It's on the 22nd from 8:00 to noon. I'd love to have any of you that can come. It's fun. I don't know, the community is, well, it just kind of gets emotional, to be honest.
And I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Okay. Please look at the brushers, and three minutes goes by faster than I thought. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Lampeau. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello to everyone. It's good to be in front of Westminster and see everyone before me. Some of you may know that John Palmer, a frequent speaker here at Westminster, recently passed away. So, my name's Tom Lampeau, and here to lift up Westminster in prayer. So please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus' name, we ask you to join us here tonight and every day in Westminster. You are the living God, and you are welcome here. We're feeble without you, but you give us the strength to make a difference. You make all things possible because of who you are. Isaiah 43:10 declares your preeminence. You are my witness, declares the Lord, and my servant whom I have chosen, that you may know and believe me and understand that I am he. Before me no God was formed, nor shall there be any after me. Nothing came before you and nothing we conceive or plan we devise can challenge your authority. All situations are in your control. We can rest in you. Father, I want to lift up to you, John Palmer's family and friends. Comfort them in their time of loss. In Proverbs 27:17, your word states, "Iron sharpens iron, so a man sharpens the continents of his friends." You give us your word to guide and improve our lives. John gave us his words because he saw areas where our community could be better. Thank you for his life. Tonight, I want to lift up to you all, the young people in Westminster. Children are a gift from you. They are looking for direction. Bless them with the strength and character found in Romans 12:2, which states, "Do not conform to the patterns of this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind; then you will be able to test and improve what God's will is, is good, blessing, or pleasing, and perfect will." This world is not easy, but if you bless them with your perfect will, they will have your word to rely on. Father, incredible times we are living in, a true spiritual battle for the ages. Many in our community are struggling, which is a true testament to how, as a society, we don't have the answers. We can't agree on the here and now. You know the future, and we've kept you out of our public life. Tonight, I lift up to you all that live in Westminster. Be with the entire community and give hope to all of us. Romans 15:13 says, "May the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace in believing, so by the power of the Holy Spirit you may abound in hope." We'll keep you to your word. You are the God of hope. Fill us all so hope is overflowing and leaves no room for fear. Help us rest in the comfort you offer. You are God, and we are your people. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen. Thank you all. Have a nice night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jim Fenimore. Welcome.
Good evening, council. I've got some to hand out here. Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, Jody Harb. I just want to come before you guys. There was confrontation with John Palmer, with people in the city. I understand that. But John had the city at heart. He really cared about the city, and that's what his true belief was, was better for the community. So I'd like to take just a second, just thank John for everything he did for this community, and appreciation to him, his family, his dedication. He spent hours and hours trying to research things to take in better the city. So thank you, John. I'm going to personally miss him. He was a friend of mine and gave me some insight on different things. Thank you very much, John. Miss you, but I can see you in heaven. Thank you. At any rate, next thing is, is the handout here. We had the election here recently, and the people spoke on their election. And so when you guys are appointing someone else to replace Dave, hopefully, from what the community's voted on and what the community's wishes are, looks like, to my numbers, Kathy's next in line to be on the council. So hopefully, that will be taken into consideration of who's going to be appointed by what the city and what the people spoke of and what their wishes are. Lastly, the dust over at the Uplands has been atrocious. I see that they have done some work over there, but they're, like I said, as working for developers in my lifetime, if we were in violation, we were fined daily, not weekly, not monthly, not yearly, daily. So we made sure that we were compliant, and we didn't have dust getting stirred up, and we didn't have water running where it wasn't supposed to be running, because we didn't want to have those fines. So hopefully, someone's going to step up, and I don't know who's not doing their job, but some needs to be taken care of there. And congratulations to the up-and-coming new council mayor. Look forward to working with you in the future here. And like I said, John's granddaughter was thinking about coming here, because I did get the call that, I did see John that very last night that he passed away. But obviously, she couldn't make it, so kudos to the family. Love you guys. Goodbye.
Thank you. That was the last speaker. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a brief report this evening. If we could stay on this first slide for a moment, Abby. Thank you, Mr. Lampeau, Mr. Fenimore, for acknowledging the passing of a Westminster icon, a member of our Westminster community. Last week, we were saddened to hear the passing of Mr. Palmer. I think everybody in this room who has worked with Mr. Palmer over the years, his level of commitment and dedication and passion were unmatched. Mr. Palmer was a regular here at city council every Monday night, except for when his health was failing in the final months, and he would regularly take the time to meet with me. We would often meet in his neighborhood and go through a list of things that he had prepared for me, and we would go through that list together, and I would follow up with him with staff's help on those. I would say, and I think some of our speakers spoke to it tonight, Mr. Palmer set a high standard for excellence in local government, and there he and I agreed 100% with each other. And I can say that although we didn't always meet Mr. Palmer's standard, he has helped us do better. And I just want to shout out Mr. Palmer for his years of advocacy and engagement and involvement. Thank you, and we'll miss you. Next slide, please. All right, so we do have the unofficial results of our November 4th election, and the counties, in our case, work to certify and make these official. The numbers support me being able to confirm tonight that the residents have passed paramedics and pavement ballot issue 3H. And I actually have another slide to talk a little bit more about 3H and next steps for that ballot measure. And as speakers have mentioned, Mayor-elect Claire Carmelia, congratulations and welcome to Mayor of Westminster soon. Counselors Obi Azadi and Mayor Protem Sarah Narmela also reelected, and our new counselor-elect, Jack Johnson, will join council on December 1st with the swearing-in ceremony. After that point, and in following the discussion at pre-meeting, city council, after being sworn in on December 1st, will undertake a process to fill the seat vacated by Mayor-elect Claire Carmelia. And that city council will have 30 days within that window to appoint a new member of city council. And so that is set out, and there will be more discussion on that at the next city council meeting. City council in pre-meeting, for those of you who weren't able to be there earlier this evening, did set out a set of dates and a process for which to undertake the filling of that new seventh seat of city council. So more to come on that. Next slide, please. A little bit of a deeper dive on the paramedics and pavement ballot issue 3H. Tonight, before city council, is an emergency ordinance, and that is the official title of an ordinance that is brought before city council to pass on one reading instead of two readings. And the reason for the single-reading ordinance tonight is that it does follow the voters' passing of a ballot measure 3H. And according to the code language, for that 0.4% sales tax adjustment to become effective on January 1st, state law requires the city to transmit the enacting ordinance to the state at least 45 days prior to January 1st. So when you look at our council schedule, that drives us into this evening for city council to consider this ordinance, which would bring that into effect. And so we will bring, subject to the city council's decision tonight, and it does require a supermajority for an emergency ordinance, and that means six of seven members of council have to support that. If that does not proceed as a emergency ordinance and does not receive a supermajority tonight, but does receive a simple majority, then that would serve as first reading of an ordinance, and we would bring the second reading of that ordinance back within, in two weeks. That is very tight, and that gets us right down to the day for letting the state know that our voters approved this measure. And so that is why staff are recommending that city council addresses the emergency ordinance for this matter tonight. Next slide, please. I want to highlight that tomorrow is November 11th, and that means that the city hall administrative offices are closed, and we do invite the community to join us tomorrow morning at our Armed Forces Tribute Garden for a 10:00 AM ceremony celebrating all veterans in the city of Westminster. And honestly, any community member from around Westminster are very welcome to participate with us tomorrow morning, November 11th, at the Armed Forces Tribute Garden, and that, of course, is located at 6601 West 104th Avenue, and the event will start right at 10:00 AM. Next slide, please. For tonight's agenda, I have two slides, an information-only item in the packet. Included is the annual consolidated evaluation report for our Community Development Block Grant Program. On consent agenda, we have four items this evening, and under New Business, there are some items. The first reading of Counselors Bill 46, that amends the Westminster Municipal Code for official postings and notices. Also up is the first reading of Counselors Bill 47, and that amends the Westminster Municipal Code for the Employee 401A Defined Contribution Plan. And also is first reading of Counselors Bill 48 regarding the Colorado Emergency Medical Services Supplemental Payment Program to the General Capital Outlay Replacement Fund. Next slide, please. Also under New Business tonight, first reading of Counselors Bill 49, that amends the Westminster Municipal Code concerning the regulation of gray water. Next up will be Counselors Bill 50, and that's an emergency ordinance, as I described, amending the Westminster Municipal Code concerning the rate imposition, collection, and distribution of sales and use tax to enact ballot issue 3H as approved by city of Westminster voters. Finally, tonight, there is a meeting of the Westminster Economic Development Authority, or WIDA, and that will begin after the regular meeting of council, and that has one item for the WIDA board to consider, and that is the authorization of special legal counsel for downtown Westminster. Next slide, please. This week, there are some things happening. As I've mentioned, tomorrow, that is Tuesday, November 11th, so we are closed for city administrative purposes, but welcome the community to our Armed Forces Tribute Garden for the 10:00 AM Veterans Day Ceremony. Planning Commission tomorrow is canceled. On Wednesday, the 12th, there is an inclusivity board meeting that's happening. That's a hybrid meeting that starts at 6:00 PM. There's also an historic landmark board meeting, and that's a hybrid also, that begins at 7:00 PM. And also a youth advisory panel meeting that begins at 6:00 PM, right here at city hall. On Thursday, the 13th, there is a Parks, Recreation, Libraries Open Space Advisory Board meeting at Legacy Ridge Clubhouse, 10801 Legacy Ridge Parkway, and that starts at 6:00 PM. And then on Saturday, please make note of this, Saturday, November 15th, we have another free event for our community, and that is Leaf and Pumpkin Recycling at the Browell Property. So that's free drop-off at the Browell Property from 8:00 AM to noon, and that is located at 1001 Alkire Street. So bring your Leafs and Pumpkins. I know that the Leaves are out there now, and also your Halloween Pumpkins are welcome to be dropped off. Next slide, please. At our next meeting of city council, it is a study session night. We will also be having that evening a special meeting of city council, and that will be for city council to consider the first reading of Counselors Bill regarding the proposed amendment to the adopted 2026 budget and adopting a resolution amending the 2026 pay plan. That's per the ballot issued 3H, 2026 Paramedics and Pavements Initiative passed by Westminster voters. Also that night is the actual study session. There will be two presentations that evening, a concept plan review for Highland Village 2, that's a multi-family development, and then a presentation on the 2026 budget development process debrief. And so this is where staff will be seeking from city council feedback on the 2026 budget process and looking forward already to the preparation of the 2027 budget. Sorry, Mayor, you won't be helping us on the 2027 budget, except for this night. Next slide, please. As always, I encourage the community to use Access Westminster to get ahold of the city and let us know of anything that we need to fix out there. That's westminsterco.gov/AccessWestminster. Get our mobile app. If you don't have that yet, it's pretty efficient. You can phone us during office hours, Monday to Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, 303-658-2400, and we'll pick that call up after hours as well with our AI assist, if that works better for you, on our website. That's westminsterco.gov, and we do have our four social media platforms, Facebook, Instagram, X, and Nextdoor. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions for city manager? Mayor Protem?
I've been here four years, and I just raised my hand. Just a question, have we had any input on the AI feature at all from residents? Just curious.
I think we've had one that I'm aware of that we weighed in on, and I think we are learning from that interaction, but we have not had, to my knowledge, significant feedback, negative or positive. But staff is monitoring, and as soon as they get some data on that and how it's working, how many calls actually end up moving over in that direction versus answered by our full-time staff, we'll let you know. We'll get a report back on that. But at this time, often in these matters, no word is probably good news, that we're not hearing anything negative just yet.
I may have to secret shop that and see how it works.
Counselor Ireland?
Maybe for all those that are interested in applying for the position that we went over pre-meeting, you could explain to them the process and what we're going to do and why we're doing it that way.
Thank you, Counselor Ireland. The city clerk will map out what was discussed in pre-meeting, and we'll get that out into public record for tonight's purposes. Great suggestion. Great suggestion. Anybody interested in letting City Council know that you may want to be considered for that seventh seat of City Council that will come into effect on December 1st, please communicate your interest directly to City Clerk Abby Fitch. And she will compile that information and bring that to City Council when they're ready to, when you're ready to go through the process. And then the actual process will be outlined by the clerk in more detail after tonight, once we put that down on paper.
And the date that they need to contact her was by, what did I write down?
The application will open on December, yeah, sorry, November 18th. And then it will close on December 2nd.
All right, thank you.
Seeing no others, that brings us to City Council comments. Councillor Ireland?
I just want to thank everyone that came out. And I, as well as you, Ms. John Palmer. I got to speak to him the night he died too. And that was a blessing for me that I could express my appreciation that he cares enough to show up. Because not everyone in this city cares that much to show up. And he held all of us accountable for transparency to the residents of this city. And it can't be replaced. So I'm sorry, I'm so emotional. But it was tough to hear. And I appreciate you speaking on his behalf. Thanks so much. And all the best to his family and prayers for them and for comfort for them. And I just want everyone to know that I cared about John and I appreciated him showing up. Thanks.
Councillor Carmelia?
Thank you. I also wanted to say thank you to those who spoke the kind words for John Palmer. I believe that he helped all of us serve the city better. So I appreciate your time to come up and say that because he deserves recognition for all of his work. I also wanted to acknowledge Mr. Allen, who spoke about volunteers. I just wanted to note that that is something that is a high priority for me. And so we'll be hopefully working on that very soon. But just looking how to get folks engaged because it is true that there are so many folks that want to be engaged and don't know how to be. And so that is something that, you know, I'm trying to be focused on. And then as far as the uplands with the dust, I don't know if that's something that we can hold the developer accountable for. But I just wanted to make a side note that I just read yesterday that this might be one of the lowest water precipitation years in a long time. And so just for general knowledge, you know, that's something that we're all going to be facing here together this year. And then, you know, we addressed this in the pre-meeting and we've explained the process. But just to acknowledge one more time on our process that we're going to be going forward on the vacancy. You know, the voters were asked to vote for three councillors. And it seems that it would be pulling the wool over their eyes if we suddenly accept it for, you know, that's a bit misleading to voters. And so we're going to go through with this interview process. And it's tried and true, it's been tested. And so I look forward to seeing and hearing from all the applicants from that. And then to those who spoke on my behalf, thank you. I appreciate the congratulations. And I really am humbled and grateful for the outpouring of support. And I look forward to serving you.
Councillor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to add to Pylon and give some words to John Palmer and what he meant to us. So I think, Jody, you said it best. He set a high standard for public service. Whether or not you agree with him or not, whether or not he criticized us or not, I always appreciated and admired that he fought for his community. He used his voice to bring about the change that he wanted to see. And that's all we can ask for, right? That's what we want as a government. He was a participant of democracy. And democracy doesn't work unless you work it. And he understood that. And I hope that he set an example for citizens across the city that if you want to change something about your community, use your voice and participate. And he really exemplified that and he will be missed.
Mayor Protem?
I too also wanted to share my condolences to John Palmer's family. And I do appreciate his voice at our council meetings and, you know, giving us, you know, sometimes a hard time, but also challenging us. And I think that that can be hard to hear. But it's also like Manager Andrews said, it is something that does make us better and make us reflect on what are we, you know, is there a way to do better? And I think that also, you know, just with, you know, for the dog park is an example of frustration that turned into an amazing community gathering opportunity and volunteer opportunity that's actually expanding within the city. And we, it's just really great to see how we can turn that into making ourselves better if we listen, if we truly listen to one another. So, thank you.
I just wanted to say too, the thing I loved about John was that he could give his mind to us. And there were times, and I will never forget, heading to the town hall at Station 1. And I don't even remember what he had said on the Monday night. But he was waiting for me. And I had parked around the corner from the fire station and was coming in. And it was during some of my time where I was a little weaker. And he asked if he could help me down one of the curbs. And I said, "Thank you." And then he said, "Before we go in there, would you talk to me?" And I said, "Sure." And he apologized for whatever it was that he had said. And I said, "John, when you come to the podium, or any person comes to the podium, that's what's on your mind. That's what's in your heart." And I said, "I don't have to own it, I don't have to agree, but it's what you felt." And I said, "I didn't take it personally." And I said, he said, "Well, I just need to know that you forgive me." And I said, "Absolutely, it is an issue, it isn't about friendship." And he was one to admit when sometimes he crossed the line. And I appreciate, Jody, that you worked with him. And I think he was one of our testers of our new website. So he has been missed these last few months. And he will be missed. 3H, I just have to take a minute to talk about the team of people that made that happen. We had 28 citizens, including six councillors that worked on that campaign. And when we got 10,000 door hangers and we had two and a half weeks to get them out, we had anybody running, any councillor that was working, all of the other citizens. I just put, I kept putting boxes out on my bench by the front doors. So I didn't have to be there with all my cancer treatments and stuff. I just said, "I have a sign up there so I know where people are going and other people can see, so we don't duplicate." And in two and a half weeks, 10,000 flyers went out. Our firefighters on off-duty took huge box of those and they delivered door-to-door. Our firefighters worked hand-in-hand with us. Our consultant looked at the poll that had been done. That was our roadmap and we did not deter from that. And I just have to thank all of those people. I was always throwing out all the free stuff that everybody could do because it's so expensive to run a campaign. And they did everything asked and more. So to everyone, from our firefighters, to our citizens, to this council and to our staffs, thank you. And, Jody, for your leadership. For, I remembered on the morning I woke up on the day after this election, our first talk after that. And you honored that and we went forward. And there's so many thanks, but you were the key. So thank you. All right, that brings us to consent agenda. Items, just a second. Items 8A through D. Mayor Protem?
I move to pass items 8A through 8D on the consent agenda.
Councillor Azadi?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Consent Agenda Items 8A through D. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Councillor Carmelia?
Yes.
Councillor Demont?
Yes.
Councillor Azadi?
Yes.
Councillor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
And Councillor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to New Business, Councillor's Bill Number 46. Councillor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Councillor's Bill Number 46, amending all relevant sections of the Westminster Municipal Code regarding official postings and notices.
Councillor Hott?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Councillor's Bill Number 46. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Councillor Demont?
Yes.
Councillor Azadi?
Yes.
Councillor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
Councillor Ireland?
Yes.
And Councillor Carmelia?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to Councillor's Bill Number 47. Councillor Azadi?
I move to pass Councillor's Bill Number 47 on first reading, amending Title 14 of the Westminster Municipal Code related to the Employee 401A Defined Contribution Plan.
Councillor Hott?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Councillor's Bill 47. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Ireland?
I want to know why we got a consultant to figure this out and how much we paid for them.
Vasquez, yes, please come on up, Chief Financial Officer Ezekiel Vasquez. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, Councillor Ireland. To answer your question, we worked with an actuary and a consultant to come up with the differences that we contribute and also to compare our city to our neighboring peers. And I don't have the amount of the consultant fees, but I can get that to you.
Do we ever look at the private sector and what they're getting? Or is it always this public sector?
We, to answer your question, Councillor, we looked at the public sector because they are more closely related to us. And we compete with them for the workforce.
Okay. I will be voting no for this because I think our public sector is way paid more than private sector and it's way ahead. And so we're having tax increases. So I will be voting no.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Councillor Azadi?
Yes.
Councillor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
Councillor Ireland?
No.
Councillor Carmelia?
Yes.
And Councillor Demont?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote. That brings us to Councillor's Bill Number 48. Councillor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Councillor's Bill Number 48 on first reading, providing a supplemental appropriation of Colorado Emergency Medical Services Supplemental Payment Program funds in the amount of $2,083,450 to the General Capital Outlay Replacement Fund.
Councillor Hott?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Councillor's Bill Number 48. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Councillor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
Councillor Ireland?
Yes.
Councillor Carmelia?
Yes.
Councillor Demont?
Yes.
And Councillor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to Councillor's Bill Number 49. Councillor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Councillor's Bill Number 49 on the first reading, amending Chapter 12 of Title 8 of the Westminster Municipal Code concerning the regulation of gray water.
Councillor Hott?
Second.
Excuse me. Councillor Carmelia?
Thank you. I had some questions around this because in general, I see gray water as a good use of reclaimed water to help. And I believe that the state's efforts align with trying to reuse water that can be used throughout the city, especially for lawns and whatnot. And so I did have some questions around this. Staff was kind enough to answer my questions. I then, after I asked that and got some emails, I still got some emails from some other folks that said, "You're not going to vote for that, are you?" So anyway, if you could expand on some of the answers that I received, I think that'll help residents understand what's happening.
Thank you, Councillor Carmelia, Mayor Protem, members of council, Paul Campbell, Director of Public Works and Utilities. So just in summary, there were some questions this afternoon about why would we, essentially, why would we not do this right now? And our answer really came in the form of a twofold response. One is that there's been very little, if to no, interest that we've received as a staff from the public, from builders or from developers to implement these systems. And then the second part to that is that in order to allow and permit gray water use in the city, we'd have to stand up an administrative program for that that would comply with state regulations. And we'd have to perform, develop rules and regs here locally for that and perform inspections related to that and an ongoing process of monitoring compliance with the program. So we just felt like for the benefit wasn't worth the cost in terms of what it takes to stand up versus what we would get from it at this time.
Thank you.
Short answer.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And then, yeah, I'll just reiterate that essentially the answer, it seems, is that the cost-effectiveness really doesn't match the overall water impact, which is good to know. So, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I too had similar questions to Councillor Carmelia. And I would just say that, or maybe ask that, we still continue to look at these, you know, what it will take to stand something up in preparation for the future? I know it's not something we need at the moment and it doesn't quite make sense. But can you talk a little bit about just kind of how you might go towards future-proofing?
I think it's, we are, as a staff, committed to sustainability efforts, particularly within terms of our water supplies. And we already have some existing programs that have proven to be effective in reducing consumption. This could be one also. And we will certainly continue to keep an eye on that. We stay in communications with our neighboring cities to understand their experiences with it as well. So I don't, with the state's position that it should be allowed according to the legislation, it's going to remain in the forefront for us. So we will continue to keep an eye on this. And if so desire, come back at a later date with an update on where we stand.
Okay, thank you. Just to keep us on task with it, I'd love to have an update, even if it's a year from now. I just, you know, to continue to have the conversations and to just keep pressing ahead with knowing what we would need. Because it takes years to set up a program like this where you'd have to have the staffing and all the regulations. And so I guess I just want to not be behind the eight ball if regulations get more stringent on this, if we have less choice, or if it should be needed sooner than we thought.
I think we'd be in a position to, if we had a big user that was, that would have a measurable impact on it, that we could come back and reestablish it. Just because we prohibit it now doesn't mean we can't come back and allow it at a later date.
That's really good to know, thank you.
Councillor Carmelia?
Final thought here is just because the lift is somewhat extensive, it sounds like, to comply with the state regulatory program, I wonder if this is something of an effort that we could look at regionally with neighbors or with our counties or through Dr. Cog, if we set up, you know, some sort of program regionally, maybe to help with that lift? Because it sounds like that piece is what we need to, that burden, you know, maybe we can look outside the box there.
Yes, I think as time goes, there'll be more model ordinances in place and programs that we can learn from and borrow and use here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Oh, sorry, Councillor Demont? Oh, okay. Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
Councillor Ireland?
we believed in the value of our firefighting needs and services, and we've seen the increase in the demand for services. So, I know even with 3H, we still have more to do, and so I'm excited to say yes on this as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Roll call, please. Mayor Protem Normella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote. It is 8:02, and I will adjourn this meeting, moving us into the Westminster Economic Development Authority Agenda for November 10th, 2025, incorporating the roll call from the past meeting, and do we have a motion for minutes of October 13th? Counselor, Mayor Protem?
I move to approve the minutes of the October 13th, 2025 Westminster Economic Development Authority Meeting as presented.
Counselor Ha?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of October 13th, 2025 for the Westminster Economic Development Authority. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to authorize special legal counsel contract for Downtown Westminster Project. Counselor Azadi?
I move to authorize the executive director to enter into an agreement with Murray, Dahl, Berry, and Reynold LLP for legal services related to the Downtown Westminster Project and general urban renewal and eminent domain matters in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize special legal counsel contract for the Downtown Westminster Project. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Ireland?
I want to know how many hours were put in last year and how much we paid for last year.
Thank you, Counselor Ireland. Dave Frankel, City Attorney. So, City Council authorized a contract a year ago for $150,000, and we believe that is now spent, and that's why we're bringing forward this proposal for your consideration tonight, so...
Do you know how many hours that is?
Mr. Murray's fees, I believe, are $350 per hour, and during the last year, his fees have essentially covered the $150,000 authorized amount that City Council made in December of 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please. Board Member Carmelia?
Yes.
Board Member Demott?
Yes.
Board Member Azadi?
Yes.
Board Member Ha?
Yes.
Chairperson McNally?
Yes.
Vice Chair Normella?
Yes.
And Board Member Ireland?
No.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote. It is 8:02, and I will adjourn this meeting, moving us into the Westminster Economic Development Authority Agenda for November 10th, 2025, incorporating the roll call from the past meeting, and do we have a motion for minutes of October 13th? Counselor, Mayor Protem?
I move to approve the minutes of the October 13th, 2025 Westminster Economic Development Authority Meeting as presented.
Counselor Ha?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of October 13th, 2025 for the Westminster Economic Development Authority. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to authorize special legal counsel contract for Downtown Westminster Project. Counselor Azadi?
I move to authorize the executive director to enter into an agreement with Murray, Dahl, Berry, and Reynold LLP for legal services related to the Downtown Westminster Project and general urban renewal and eminent domain matters in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize special legal counsel contract for the Downtown Westminster Project. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Ireland?
I want to know how many hours were put in last year and how much we paid for last year.
Thank you, Counselor Ireland. Dave Frankel, City Attorney. So, City Council authorized a contract a year ago for $150,000, and we believe that is now spent, and that's why we're bringing forward this proposal for your consideration tonight, so...
Do you know how many hours that is?
Mr. Murray's fees, I believe, are $350 per hour, and during the last year, his fees have essentially covered the $150,000 authorized amount that City Council made in December of 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please. Board Member Carmelia?
Yes.
Board Member Demott?
Yes.
Board Member Azadi?
Yes.
Board Member Ha?
Yes.
Chairperson McNally?
Yes.
Vice Chair Normella?[1632.12]